Council meeting. Do I have a motion to reconvene in open session?
Scott Billhurst, I shall move.
Counsel Gary still moved.
All in favor?
First, I.
Gary.
Marvel, I. Moffett, I.
Davis, I.
Motion passes. State by the council president, both were taken in an executive session. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Mr. President, Scott Billhurst, I moved it. We steal the minutes of the executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Marvel.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel, I.
Davis, I.
Moffett, I. Okay, the motion passes. I'd like to welcome everyone to the town council meeting of March 1st at 7:00. I'd like to call the meeting to order with a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Into the republic. For which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible. With a fair future and justice for all. First up is a continuation of the public hearing, proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Number one, convene the open hearing on a petition to consider amendments to the Hopkinton zoning ordinance, including the farm viability ordinance in chapter 246 entitled Non-Residential Photovoltaic Solar Energy Systems, PSES, as amended January 22nd, 2019, filed by Thomas and Cynthia Sculco, 192 Woodville Road, Hopkinton, Rhode Island, 02833, and 132. Yes?
I was thinking because of the, I know there is some interest in dog ordinance and some other issues. Is it possible we could have this at the end of the agenda because it's no, no telling how long the solar thing will last and people might have other items they want to discuss. I'm just going out there. I'm sorry for not bringing that to your attention.
Okay, well, so with that request, I would like to have a discussion with the rest of the council members to see if they have any, any, any issues with that. Does anyone else have an issue with Counsel Hurst's request?
Counsel Gary, maybe Mr. President, maybe it was a good idea to wrap up the small loose end before we go into this big, big agenda, big solar issue.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move all the items up and continue the continuation of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment after those other things are dealt with, with exception of course of the public forum in the adjournment. Thank you. I move, I move to move that up.
Peter Squares, do you have any issues with that? I think it's, it should be.
No, no objection, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that being said, we will, we will shift this around just a little bit here.
I think you need a, I need a second to that motion.
Okay, well, is, is there a second? All in favor?
I.
First, I.
Gary, I.
Moffett, I.
Davis, I.
The motion passes. All right, so next up is.
All right, may I ask who made the sec, I could not hear who seconded.
It was me.
It was an attorney. Bob, oh, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, just a reminder, if we can state our names whenever we are saying yea or nay, that, that'd be great. Thank you. So up next here, this was a, this was a suggested agenda item from Counselor Hurst. So with that being said, I will, I will give him the floor and he can start this discussion. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, I, I thought we'd move all, like, the consent agenda and all that and have this afterwards, but the, you want me to talk about the dog issue?
Yes, Scott, I would, I would. We could, we can do that. The consent agenda is a smaller item. That's just a matter of minutes.
Okay, if nobody objects to it that way. The, the issue is, and I don't want to steal any thunder from Counsel Gary because I know he's been working on the issue, but social media does have an impact and on Facebook, there's been a discussion about a pit bull situation in the Tomacquod Road area. And I'm concerned if you follow the ordinances of the town of Hopkinton and it's in violation of the ordinances of this town to let a dog roam. Dogs must be leashed or tied up. And I think that we should at least look at some of the penalties and the best way to enforce this. I know we're a so-called country town. I grew up here. But at the same time, there are some legitimate concerns about animals attacking other animals or, or maybe people who do hike and things of that nature. So, and also I think we should look at some of the penalties. It seems that it's been decades since penalties have been addressed and it would seem that when you look at some penalties, it's, there are stronger penalties for less offensive, like littering. And I'm not saying your people should litter, but I'm just saying is that if you have a dog that possibly could bite somebody or create some havoc, it seems that the penalties are very mild. So I think we really have to look at that and take an interest doing so. I also understand, Mr. President, that our animal control officer has had some concerns or interest in that some future meeting. I don't think she's here in the audience. Maybe she is, that I would like to have her speak. But the fact of the matter is the, this comes basically from a Facebook discussion and I know Counsel Gary has. I deliberately did not want to contact him because I had already contacted Mr. Moffett. I'm, but I think it's something that certainly the people in the community are interested on and they are certainly talking about it on social media. And I think the council should have at least some response to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Counsel Gary, did you have any comments or anything you wanted to add to this discussion?
I think there might be, yeah, let me just say my prayer. That's kind of up in my area. It's up a little farther from the farm. Someone, a citizen did reach out to me and said, hey, there's a pit bull that's out bothering other dogs, maybe playing too hard with some other farm dogs in the other, in the other farm up by me. And I think we, and the next morning I reached out to the ACO. Very, she went ahead and took action right away, talked to the people. Very concerned that other dogs in the neighborhood or people walking up by the new walk area a little farther up on Tomacquod. That was a question. So if is, I'm not sure if the ACO is on or not.
Let me check. If she is, Samantha, right?
Samantha, yep.
If Samantha is on, on the call, could you please raise your hand if you are on the call? That would be star six, I believe. Hold on one second. I'm, I'm going to check. There's a hand up here. I just want to see if this is Samantha. Hello, if your phone number ends in 4232, is this Samantha?
Hi, hi, no, this is Tracy, the court reporter. Just wanted to let you know that I was here.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I do, I do not see Samantha on here. But I will add, this is Counsel Moffett. I would like to add to the discussion that I know Samantha and the town solicitor have spoken and, and they haven't spoken about this particular issue, but they have spoken in regards to the animal ordinance in town. I know that it hasn't been updated in well over 30 years. So there is a lot of old, old language in it. I know some of the fines and some of the penalties are probably outdated. So it is on the radar. It was, it's, it's firmly being looked through and gone over. So we are hoping shortly that we will have a new animal ordinance in the works. So it's definitely something that's long overdue. I actually can't believe it's been 30 years since they've updated it. So I'll look forward to seeing.
Mr. President, Counsel Hurst, I think the, there's a couple of perspectives that I have. Number one, we need an active animal control commission. I know it's not as prestigious as some of the other town boards, but they do serve an important purpose in town. So I hope, and it's not that demanding a commission, or would be, but I would hope that some people will step up to the plate and consider serving. Also, I'd like us to look at the ordinance and strengthen it up. But I would like to have the town manager direct either the chief of police and/or the animal control office to make a report on what improvements they think they need and what role they think the town can have to achieve those goals. Specifically, not only budget-wise, but also as far as ordinances and closing any loopholes. And also I would like to have a report on the situation. And of course, you don't have to name names, but on the pit bull situation in any of the roaming dog situation in town, which is a violation of the ordinances of the town of Hopkinton. And I would respectfully ask that we have a report from the town manager, acting town manager in regard to those issues from either the chief of police and/or the animal control officer. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. President, Counsel Gary, I think there might be one or two people from the public that wanted to chime in on this.
Okay, first off, I see Mr. Rosso's hand is raised. So Scott had mentioned him, so I will, I will go to him first. But for the general public, if you would like to speak, if you hit star nine on your telephone, it will raise your hand. And when I call on you, if you hit star nine, that will allow you to unmute yourself and speak. But right now, I'm going to start with Mr. Rosso. Mr. Rosso, you have your hand raised? Did you have something to say?
Yeah, good evening, counsel. This is acting town manager Brian Rosso. I just wanted to address Councilman Hurst's concerns. As, as you said, Counsel Moffett, we, the chief and the animal control officer Samantha Bowen rewrote the entire animal control ordinance. So it's in the works. It's being reviewed by the solicitors, probably be prepared to be presented to the council, I would say, within a month's time. I, I think it was kind of put on the back burner. It seemed like you guys had a lot on your plate with the solar ordinance. So that was going to be the next thing we were going to try to put in front of you once that was wrapped up. But it does address a lot of the outdated issues. It's, it's basically a rewrite of the entire ordinance, increases fees and fines and those things. So just wanted to let you know where it was at.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Rosso. So if, so if anyone in the audience would like to speak to this matter or has any comments or concerns regarding this discussion, we, I will open the floor to any comments or questions. And please, star six to raise your hand. Okay, star six. I'm going to give another probably 30 seconds here. Okay, Counsel Gary, I do not see any hands raised. So I'm going to go back to, yes, sir. Okay, I'd like to go back to the council. Does anyone else have anything to add to this, this conversation? Or anything to, to say?
Yeah, Mr. President, Counsel Gary, I want to say thank you to the acting town manager and the ACO for acting in on this and go from there. Ben, as always, we're, you know, it's a public thing and this was on the docket. So I'm good with it.
Counselor Hurst, I would say, I think I met the animal control and the chief were here the other night when we had our budget workshop and I wish her well and look forward to seeing the final product. But there is an interest in a town about dog issues. And certainly when things are on Facebook or in the public domain, it's something you got to pay attention to. And I look forward to it. But people need to realize that it is a violation in the town to allow dogs to roam. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hurst. I would just like to add that I am glad to see that the chief and Samantha have, have worked together to work on a new ordinance. You know, for her, it's probably comforting to know that she's had some input regarding this ordinance. So I'm seeing it as she is the animal control officer and probably understands, you know, many residents have. So kind of helped to put a pool in her, in her tool bag to kind of enforce some of the, you know, the rules that have been outdated. So I'm glad to see that she's in it. So I will ask one last time, if anyone wanted to add any comments to this, please raise your hand by hitting star six on your telephone. Sorry, star nine, raise your hand, please. Star nine to raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. With that, I'm going to close this discussion. I'd like to thank Counsel Hurst for, for opposing this discussion so we could kind of just keep the public aware, you know, and let them know that, you know, whenever they have a concern, they can bring it to a council member and, and we'll try to find them answers.
I, I want to thank Counselor Hurst. I want to thank the council president for putting it on the agenda because there is interest in, in the town on this issue. Thank you.
Excellent, Scott, thank you. All right, with that said, well, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, approve the town council meeting minutes of February 8th, 2021.
I'd like to take all the meeting minutes off. I noticed there was one error and I got to go through it. And I moved that all the consent agenda be approved except the individual meeting minutes.
Okay, so I will move, Lisa, did you, did you have something to say?
No, I didn't say anything.
Okay, I wasn't charged, did not want to ignore you. So with that being said, I'm going to continue reading this, Scott, and then we will strike out whatever you have. So, or, all right, hold on. Let me, let me kind of recalculate this a bit. So, all right, so consent agenda, we're going to strike all the meeting minutes. I'm going to pick up with approve abatements on the 2019 and 2020 motor vehicle tax rule due to corrections, adjustments to condition days own and duplicate billings, and approve abatements to the 2020 real property tax rule due to condition and living area adjustments submitted by the tax assessor. Ratify and approve the 13th local declaration of emergency from February 9th to April 5th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I think I already did, but I shall move Scott Hurst.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. President, Counsel Gary.
Excellent, all in favor?
I.
First, I.
Moffett, I.
Marvel, I.
All right, motion passes. Up next, we'll go to boards and commissions.
No, you got to vote on the other ones, the other minutes. Other meetings, we withdrew.
What do you want to say, Scott?
No, I think I, my motion was to remove all the meeting minutes.
Right. This is Lisa, I have a question.
Yeah. Yes, what's your question, Lisa?
Are you addressing all of them in a separate motion? Or do you have an individual?
I just have one, I have, I have one correction and I had to locate it. It's on page seven on February 8th, 2021. And on the bottom of February 8th, 2021, it says Aurin, like the man's name, O-R-I-N. And her name is Aurin, A-U-R-E-N. The reason I know that is I, she worked on me at Wood River Health Services. I had hand problems and she was the one that dealt with it and that's how I know how to spell her name. So with that, with that change on the last paragraph on page seven, February 8th, 2021, I moved that the, all the minutes be accepted as presented with that one change.
A second, Marvel. All in favor?
First, I.
Moffett, I.
Gary, I.
Davis, I.
Marvel, I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, boards and commissions. Number one, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Marilyn Grant to the Land Trust Board of Trustees.
Scott Billhurst, I shall move.
Sharon Davis, I second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Davis, I.
Moffett, I.
Gary, I.
Motion passes. Marilyn Grant is reappointed to the Land Trust Board of Trustees. Up next, number two in boards and commissions, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Garrett Rhodes to the Affordable Housing Partnership.
Scott Billhurst, so moved.
Davis, second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Davis, I.
Gary, I.
Okay, motion passes. Jared Rhodes is reappointed to the Affordable Housing Partnership. All right. Lisa, I see your hand is up. Did you, did you have a comment?
This is Lisa, no, I already made it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. All right, with that said, we're going to continue on with the, with the public hearing. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment. One, reconvene the hearing on a petition to consider amendments to the Hopkinton zoning ordinance, including the farm viability ordinance in chapter 246 titled Non-Residential Photovoltaic Solar Energy Systems, PSES, as amended January 22nd, 2019, filed by Thomas and Cynthia Sculco, 192 Woodville Road, Hopkinton, Rhode Island, 02833, and 132 East 95th Street, New York, New York. The application is filed in accordance with section 16 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Hopkinton as amended. The hearing was continued to March 1st, 2021 during the February 16th, 2021 town council meeting. The proposal would amend sections 2, 5, 5.3, 5.5 through 7, and 10 of the zoning ordinance in order to substantially revise the manner in which major, minor, accessory, and contaminated solar energy system proposals, including roof-mounted and commercial solar energy systems, are considered and approved throughout the town of Hopkinton. Both changes include, but are not limited to, limiting principal use commercial solar energy systems manufacturing zones, requiring land development project review for principal use slash commercial solar energy systems, requiring special use permit approval for such uses, altering the dimensional requirements for such uses and establishing a precedence of approval when multiple approvals are required. The application describing the proposed amendments is a 22-page document that is adopted would represent a comprehensive overhaul of the town regulation of all proposed solar energy systems throughout the town. The applicant or its representative present. I see Attorney Squares here. Yep.
Peter Squares, on behalf of the applicant, thank you.
And Lisa, all fees and notices have been posted. So with that said, I would like to start the council discussion. I will start the discussion off, off tonight with just a couple of things that I, I would like to add upfront here. And one of them is, I know that we've, we've had many meetings and many workshops on this and we've kind of dialed down some things, or dialed in, I, I should say, to, to almost a place where we are happy with, with where we're at. So the first thing that I would like to bring up in regards to this, and I will open it up for discussion, is the contaminated site solar. So I would, I would like to add to this amendment, or I propose to add to this amendment, a date of recognized contamination. Meaning I would like to set a specific date as to, to a, say like a cutoff date for, for contaminated sites to be, be included in this ordinance here. Attorney Squares, did you have any type of kind of wording potentially for that? Or, or something in mind that we could add to that?
So the last draft that I sent to you, Mr. Council President, that I sent to the clerk's office, in the definition of contaminated site pending remediation, the language I suggested says a property that has been identified and confirmed by RITM as of February 16th, 2021, as being contaminated through a letter and then as issuance of a letter of responsibility. So that in the definition would give a cutoff date.
Excellent, thank you. I first, I somehow missed that after going through this ordinance about five or six times. Well, that's, that, that's good to hear. That makes me feel, feel better about it. Is there any other discussion regarding that topic amongst the council members?
Yeah, the, the Councilman Hurst, the, the interesting thing about that is that it's contaminated sites known to the Department of Environmental Management. So potentially there could be other potential contaminated sites that are unknown. And that's really, what do you, how do you deal with that, that fact? You're only dealing with those that are known to the DEM, the way it's written.
Well, my, my addition to that or, or, or comment to yours, Scott, would be along the lines of, I mean, I, and, and this is just my thought, is that I'm sure there's probably not a lot of people out there looking for contaminated sites. If, if, if you own a contaminated site, I mean, I'm not saying people aren't honest or anything, but I could very likely see people not raising their hand when, when they think they potentially have a contaminated site. That's kind of where I stand on that.
I just thought it was, Councilman Hurst, again, I just thought it was a good point to bring out. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon, go ahead.
Can you add that date, you know, on the second description where it says contaminated site, solar energy system? Can you put that in there as well about, that's been identified? So it should be in, after the words, a solar energy system located on a, on a contaminated site that has been identified and confirmed by RITM as of February 16th? Put that also in that particular definition as well?
I can add that, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Excellent. I also have a couple of other things regarding the contaminated solar sites here that I would like to put up first, first. Notes. Okay. All right, section 5.3.4 on page 10, subsection H. I will read it out here. It says contaminated site, solar and manufacturing zones shall occupy no more than 30% of a lot, exclusive of wetlands, which is to include interrow and panel slash collector spacing in instances where a panel is rezoned from a, excuse me, a parcel is rezoned from a residential or commercial to a manufacturing zone designation for the purpose of accommodating a contaminated site solar energy system. The maximum coverage shall be lesser of 3% of a lot or three acres. Any subsequent subdivision of a parcel that contains a contaminated site solar energy system that be required to maintain the maximum coverage. ought to be required to maintain the maximum coverage requirements established in this section. Subdividing a lot may not be used to circumvent a lot covered requirements established in this ordinance. I am looking to change thirty percent to seventy-five percent lot coverage. I think, again, some of the known sites we have here, I mean, thirty percent of the property just is not going to satisfy what is necessary. So I, I am proposing changing that to seventy-five percent. I would like to hear any discussion on this.
Counselor Moffett, as Bob Marvel here. I'm just wondering, because I don't know off the top of my head, what is our standard ordinance lot coverage for manufacturing zone right now?
Our standard lot covering? I, the only manufacturing zone usage is, is in contaminated sites. So that would be the only lot size coverage percentage that we would have.
Right, so what I mean is, on current, current, currently...
In our current PSES you're talking about?
No, 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 on, on current manufacturing sites. For, if someone has a manufacturing site and they want to build on it, what is the current requirement for lot, maximal lot coverage?
And...
So, not, not, nothing to do with solar, just standard lot coverage?
Mr. President, I'm looking at section six of your zoning ordinance that has a dimensional regulation table. And I believe that in the manufacturing zone, you have a seventy-five percent lot coverage maximum, which includes the area that may be covered by buildings and impervious surfaces, seventy-five percent.
So I think what we're considering doing is, is just, and we can state this in here, is, is basically stating that if we rezone to manufacturing in this contaminated site for purposes of solar, we would follow the standard lot coverage and any of the other requirements for a manufacturing zone. If we want to be more restrictive than that, then we probably should specify.
Yes, I would say so. That's why I'm proposing seventy-five percent, Bob. So, I mean, it's, it's been the standard in, in a manufacturing site. I, I didn't know the actual, where it was located or, or, or actually remember where it was located, but Attorney Squares kind of stepped up and, and provided that for me. So that's, that's why I, I propose that. So if we wanted to be more restrictive, that's up for discussion. I mean, we can obviously discuss that. If any other council members have any, anything to add to that topic, please, please speak.
Counselor Moffett, Counselor Gary, yeah, I'm on board with that. I mean, this is something like we've always talked about. We can go back and tailor, tailor it or adjust as we need it.
Thank you, Mike. Sharon, do you have any comments?
Well, there's, from what I can tell, as of February sixteenth, there are only two sites that are zone manufacturing. The, the rest of them are in the, the lower part of this, of his thing with, where they need to be rezoned. There's only two out of the nine listed sites as of February sixteenth that are manufactured. Um, so I...
So all others would require zone changes, is what you're saying, in order to?
Yes, yes. And so I, I guess, the, the two sites that were, that are zone manufacturing is the Imperial Home Decor.
Yep.
It's got, and it has ninety-two acres. And Hope Valley Collision Center, which has one-point-three acres. So seventy-five percent, you know, of the Hope Valley Collision Center, I don't think would make any difference. The Imperial Home Decor, you'd have to figure out, but, you know, what land is really available other than that ninety-two acres? It has a lot of wetlands, et cetera. So you can decide whether you want seventy-five percent.
And it's, I mean, I, I, I want to say that, and, and I could be wrong. I had to talk to the planner or the building and zoning, or, or maybe even the town manager. But I, I, I believe that, that Imperial, Imperial, which you were just referencing, is a current business? Are they currently in business in that manufacturing zone?
No, ye- yes. No, they're closed down, but they are considered a contaminated site.
Okay.
And so they're zone manufacturing. So I, I, the point is, I'm not sure, making it seventy-five percent or not at the top? You're talking about if they're already manufactured? Or are you talking about seventy-five percent if they needed to be rezoned? That's, those are the two.
Well, any, right, right. So, so if they need to be rezoned from either residential or commercial to manufacturing, I am proposing seventy-five percent lot coverage. Based on the, based on the ordinance that was read by Attorney Squares, manufacturing property, including buildings and impervious surfaces, is also a lot coverage of seventy-five percent.
I have, I... I have a problem.
All right, so with that, I mean, if we have a problem, we can discuss this. I mean, yes.
If you really want to know what's happening, the Bowley property is the old Townsend Road property, which started this whole thing off of Old Depot Road. And they wanted seventy acres, seventy acres. I thought they only, that it was only a, a two-acre property, but it's a hundred and two acres. So now you're talking about seventy percent? You're talking about seventy acres? You're talking about starting this thing all over again? And I don't really want to get that way. I'm sorry. So I, I think it needs to be less, but I don't know how much less.
And that's a residential property you were talking about there?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And again, these are all with special use permits and stuff. The original proposal had just permitted use, so...
No, the original proposal did require changing it from residential...
Right, but it also, but it did not require a special use permit.
Yes, but, oh, God.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm not arguing with you, Sharon.
I know, it's opening the door again, that's all I'm saying. If you say seventy-five percent, I don't really want to go with seventy-five percent. Thank you. I mean, we could find some other number, but seventy-five percent, I don't want to go with.
All right, well, I mean... I mean, fifty percent, because there, there's another, I mean, I, I'm going to just kind of make a reference, quick reference to, as you're all looking at this, and as we're discussing this, you know, look further down, there are, I mean, there are twenty-five stipulations in the contaminated site solar. So if you want to put your eyes on number twelve in that same section, subsection I, number twelve, where it says, "All panels, equipment, and structures associated with a contaminated site solar energy system." This is on page twelve, item, page twelve, item twelve. I'll start over again. "All panels, equipment, and structures associated with a contaminated site solar energy system or ground-mounted accessory systems over seventeen-hundred-and-fifty square feet in size shall meet twice the principal setback requirements prescribed by the zoning district in which they are located, except that such solar energy systems shall be set back from property lines abutting residentially-zoned parcels or parcels containing residential uses a minimum of six hundred feet, and from property lines abutting public and private roads a minimum of four hundred feet." So, I mean, that was something else I was going to touch on as far as, kind of restricting the size. So, you know, if you want to look at a site like Imperial, I, I don't know... Do we know what the acre, I mean, again, I mean, I, I don't want to get too site-specific, but, I mean, do we know the level of contamination? I mean, if we're going to discuss contaminated sites, and we have a site that is, you know, fifty acres, and forty-eight of it is, is contaminated, are we going to, you know, do twenty-five acres of solar on it? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it just...
Counselor Moffett, Counselor Gary?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a suggestion? If the town planner is on, maybe could chime in and just kind of give us a little background so we're all on the same sheet?
Oh, let me see if he...
On this specific site you're talking?
Sure, sure, Jim, Jim, let me, you are unmuted, Jim. You have the floor, Jim.
Yes, Jim Lamthea, town planner. Mr. President, I am on board. I've, I've heard the discussion that's taking place.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would say there is, there is a lot in this ordinance on contaminated sites. And I want to go back to what Mr. Gary said a minute ago, when you first brought up the prospect of changing from thirty percent coverage to seventy-five. I believe Mr. Gary said that he was on board with that change. And he also said that if we need to tweak an ordinance down the line, that we could make adjustments for a particular case. Now, it's my understanding that the prevailing legal opinion in this town is that a specific ordinance for a project with, that has conditions in it, those conditions, if they are different from the general ordinance, and I'd like to say that this ordinance tonight is, let's say, I want to refer to that as the general overarching ordinance. So my, my primary focus, as you know, with this, is, is with the town landfill, the ability to do a solar array on the town landfill. So with the legal opinion that I have been given is that when it comes time for the town council to change the zone on the Stub Town landfill to manufacturing, the town council at that time can look at that particular project and amend or alter any of the conditions that's in this ordinance tonight that you're talking about. In the instance where the specific ordinance is silent on any of these conditions in here, then this general ordinance would apply. But let me make it a little bit more clear if I can. If, if the council wanted to increase the number of acres, uh, coverage on the Stub Town site from the lesser of three percent or three acres, which is what this says right now, the town council in the specific ordinance that changes the zone could say, you can do ten acres of, of solar on the landfill site. And e- even with respect to number twelve, Mr. President, that you pointed out, where it talks about setbacks. If the specific ordinance that changes the zone makes a, a, a different determination as to what the setbacks should be, that would also apply in that particular ordinance. So, so that's why, you know, there's, there's, there's things in this general ordinance that I would probably, probably take issue with if we, if we did not have the ability to make those changes when it comes time to look at the Stub Town landfill. Because quite frankly, if, if these conditions here are allowed to stand, you won't be able to do a solar array on the Stub Town landfill, period. So, so my, my hope is, I, I, I'm content to let this thing go through tonight, or not, not object to it going through, because I believe that the town has the ability to look at that site and do what it needs to do in the best interests of the town. So that, that's kind of my, my thought on this.
The, Councilman Hurst, the only, the, the problem is that the council can be accused of doing as I say, not as I do. And it's more than known, and I've been on the council on and off for eight terms, and it's been the sentiment of previous councils to have, and it's been talked about, so, to eventually have solar fields on that site. And I can't help but think in my mind, thinking about the, the landfill over in the Depot Road area that was rejected, and I'm not saying I would have voted to approve it, but I'm just saying is, that we had a landfill or a dump when I was younger, back in the sixties, that was used. It's on private property, everybody knows, that has any length of time in town knows that was a dump or landfill. And that stuff is not going to go away in the ground. So what do you do with that property? What do you do with the property on Stub Town Road? The only difference is, the one on Stub Town Road is owned by the town of Hopington. Uh, so it makes us look contradictory in allowing one, in one area and not in another area. And I'm, and I'm not saying I'm trying to be an advocate for the, the one on Depot Road, is I'm just noting the inconsistency in that situation. But I think to suggest that we're not going to eventually, whether it's this council or succeeding council, we've actually talked about people actually putting solar on Stub Town Road. So it's more than dis speculation, because it's been talked about and looked at. And I'm sure it's going to proceed. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other council members have any comments in, in regards to what Counselor Hurst or, or Jim has said?
Uh, this is Bob Marvel. I, I guess my, my only comment here is, if, even if you do increase a lot coverage to seventy-five percent, you still have other ordinance that, you know, other, other items in here that will protect us, or I should say, that will, you know, keep, keep a lot of this solar proliferation, proliferation to a minimum. I think one of them, I had, I saw just a minute ago, specified that, you know, the, the, the solar panels themselves would not cover anything more than what was actually considered to be contaminated on the site and not the entire site.
Where did you...
Sorry, go ahead, Sharon.
I just wanted to know where you saw that. I, I don't think I saw that.
Uh, yeah, where, where was that? I did see that here. Oh, it's, uh, it's under letter G, item two. And it reads, "The size of the contaminated site solar energy system considers and is reflective of the size of the contaminated area, any land use restrictions placed on the site, the amount of disturbance necessary to remediate the contaminated area, the cost of remediation activities, and any potential negative visual impacts to the surrounding neighborhood." Maybe I'm reading that wrong, but that's how I read it.
Reflective doesn't necessarily mean reduced to, but that's all right.
Okay, well, I mean, reflective, in my opinion, I mean, whether it's, I mean, obviously not a legal opinion, but I mean, it's, I know, you know, there's a dictionary for these type of things. But, I mean, reflective kind of means mirror potentially. I mean, I, I'm not sure, I'd probably need an opinion. If, Peter, do you have an opinion on that, as far as what that's kind of getting at?
So that, that, that provision is in the context of the approval that the planning board's review of the contaminated site. And that just... Um, and, uh, that just puts in a requirement that they need to, uh, uh, you know, I, I guess the, the word reflective isn't, um, uh, uh, isn't as concise of a word as it could be. Uh, but it is intended to, um, to require the planning board to find that the, um, size of the solar energy system is, doesn't greatly exceed the side of, size of the, um, contaminated site. Uh, if you like, we could, I could tweak that to say they have to find that the size of the contaminated site solar energy system does not exceed the size of the contaminated area. Um, and that way you would give a pretty clear, um, definition for the planning board to apply, deciding whether to approve the, um, application.
Well, actually, if you really wanna get, um, in detail, it, it, it also says the cost of remediation activities. And so, if, if, if you have a small site, uh, it might not, the small amount of contamination, it might, to, to, to solve it, you might need to go more. You may, might need to get bigger, because there are some developers that are not gonna want to put, you know, solar on a acre. That's not gonna help them. And so, they might wanna go beyond an acre if, if the contamination is an acre. But I don't wanna go, I don't wanna get caught up with seventy-five percent at all. I, I, that's just, I don't like that number. Um...
I do like, uh, what Peter has added in, here as far as, you know, um, in allowing for the footprint of the contaminated site, you know? I mean, obviously, you know, if you have a hundred acre property like you were referencing, Sharon, and there's one acre of contaminated property. I mean, I, I don't feel as if that one acre should be the foot in the door to say, "Okay, well, there's an acre here. Let's, let's develop the rest of it with..."
Well, you, if it's, um, if it's zoned and manufacturing, Steve would have put, made seventy-five percent available. That's my point.
I don't think, I've, I've been, Sharon, I mean, for the sake of, for instance, for example, you have a hundred acre property, right? And one acre of it is, um, contaminated. A, um, you need a special use permit, right? I mean, so you need to go through, you know, proper channels. But the proposal is for, you know, seventy-five percent, so seventy-four acres or, or, or seventy-five acres of solar. I just don't, I mean, again, I don't think that's gonna fly. I mean, I just, a little different than having a forty, fifty acre contaminated site that, you know, was potentially a landfill. I mean, that's, that's, that's a whole nother ballgame. I, I understand your fa, your, your, um, your comments regarding, you know, no one's gonna wanna put, you know, an acre of solar up. I mean, on, you know, it's, it's just not gonna be worth it money-wise to the developer. I mean, seventy-five, uh, again, I only put seventy-five because of what, um, you know, the, the lot usage on manufacturing property was. Um, and considering it was manufactured on solar sites, any, I mean, on solar, uh, manufacturing sites only. Um, I mean, we can negotiate to seventy-five percent. Um, I mean, I, I mean, I'd...
Counsel Moffett, Council Gary.
Yes, sir.
I, I know we're kinda all hung up on the, on the number a little bit, and I kinda get that. I hate, you know, I, I kinda dislike to say this, but is there somewhere we could work, and I'm sure both lawyers are probably gonna look at me when I say this, but to be to turn up, on a contaminated site, amount on a case-by-case basis, I know what you're saying, I understand what Sharon's saying. Hey, I've got seventy-five acres and only one is contaminated. And next we have seventy-five acres of, 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 we've got one acre of contaminated solar and the rest is, you know, up for grabs. So, maybe we can work some like a case-by-case, case-by-case process, something like that. Uh, Attorney Schwartz, can you kinda help me out? Can you kinda see where I'm going on this?
Um, excuse me, this should be our...
Yes, Sharon.
Oh, it should be our solicitor not swerve to come up with this.
Sure.
And I have a list of those nine sites, and I have a list of the size of them. I don't have a list of how much of their, their sizes is contaminated. But at least...
Go ahead.
At least I want, I would like that list, the RITM contaminated site list as of February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I want that made a part of this. So, we know what we're talking about, what specific sites we're talking about. And then we can talk about later, maybe, think, after we think about it some more, maybe we could put what the maximum, um, uh, amount of solar can be on each specific site. We're only talking about nine sites. But, uh, if, uh, I don't like this percentages, this general percentage of stuff.
Uh, Counselor Hurst, I do have a question. Uh, it's one of, of, uh, legal, and I'm not a lawyer, but I understand the law a little bit. One of the concepts in law is, uh, that people have a right to reasonable use of that property. And so, the question, illegal question, which I like to have a response to, is what is the, uh, legal right of a person to use so-called contaminated property? Uh, and I know contaminated property varies, but what is, what would be the legal definition if something was a judge contaminated? And they're certainly gonna be paying taxes on it. I mean, how do you, how is that judgment made? A reasonable use of contaminated property, how would you address that? How should we address that, that concept?
Um, well, my, my understanding is that during the, uh, process, it's really the, the Department of Environmental Management that makes the determination as to what the property can and can't be, um, used for, and, and I'm not familiar enough with their regulations to, uh, say exactly what that is. Um, but, um, I don't, I don't know if that's the answer to your question or, or not.
It seems to be a reasonable, uh...
I mean, it's, it's really, it's not the town's decision to declare that something is contaminated or, or not. So, it's kind of outside the, the council's purview.
But at the same time, uh, whoever owns that land certainly would have, uh, certain rights and, and, and a government agency, whether it's the planning board, the zoning board, or the council, or whatever, certainly would have, would have some parameters to, uh, agree to certain things, uh, or, or not. Uh, uh, also, especially when, uh, we know that, uh, the one that's probably gonna happen, or most certainly gonna happen, is, uh, the, uh, the solar at the, uh, Stub Town Road thing. I'd be shocked if it doesn't happen, but things, it would appear that that's, uh, coming down the pipe reasonably, uh, within due time, but, uh, we'll see. And obviously, you don't know everything that was buried there, and it was certainly, for many years, uh, the landfill for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So, with that, I mean, we're, we're, we're still hung up on this right now. Um, I think it's, it's, uh, it's a pretty, obviously, pretty important, um, regarding it size-wise, um...
The other thing, Steve, I don't like that last part of that, of number H, where it starts, starts with, um, the last phrase on page ten, where it says, "Any subsequent subdivision." All of that, uh, and on to page eleven, I think that should be eliminated. I, I, I don't wanna talk about subdivisions. The whole point was when we, when we, in the past, made something so, uh, commercial special for solar, that whole parcel was considered commercial special for solar. I don't want any subdivision.
Yeah, uh, the way that I understand it, and the way that I'm reading, is that there's just saying that you can't subdivide to certain that, that's pretty much it. So, I don't think necessarily there, you're just kinda raising that, um...
Well, it's not saying you can't subdivide.
Well, Mr. President, if, if, I, I, I think what that line is, is getting at here is, uh, I mean, assuming that you've, you're restricted to that three percent, it's to stop somebody from subdividing their lot down the middle and then getting six percent, 'cause then they can put one on each lot to stop someone from, from going that route. But if you're going to increase the coverage, that, that point might become kind of moot. Um, but I, I think that's what that is, is about. Is a site that could get three, you wouldn't wanna have somebody subdivide it and then go and get the six percent.
That, that was why that was put in there, yeah.
I mean, are you, I mean, if you have, I mean, thirty percent just seems kind of low to me. Um, I, I mean, obviously, the larger the parcel, the larger, you know, the percentage coverage is, is gonna increase the amount of...
Well, that's why I said, that's why I said, I would rather have the list of the specific nine projects that we're talking about listed in here. Listed how, what their size is right now, and, 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 and maybe kinda halfway decide what's the maximum that they could have on their, on that, those nine properties, and that's it. It's over with. But, uh, that's where I'm coming from.
That's also, Sharon, that's also, I mean, a- and again, I mean, we can't, I mean, necessarily be in the business of arbitrarily deciding, um, each one. I mean, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't know what right we would have to restrict one, one parcel, you know, if it has the size limits from another one that has... So, if both parcels have fifty acres, how we can say one can have twenty and one can have thirty?
I wouldn't. I wouldn't do it that way, but, um... We're only talking about these nine sites right now. That's it.
I understand that. So, were you happy with thirty percent? If I had said thirty percent, would you have been happy with that? Because I... No?
No. But that's, oh, Lord.
I mean, the proposals of the ordinance were happy with thirty percent. I mean, I wouldn't say happy, but they were obviously, you know, uh, proposed thirty percent. I mean, we're kinda at a standstill here. Um, I, I, if, I mean, we could follow back up on this topic. If there are any other sections of this ordinance that anybody has a problem with or wants to propose a change or, or anything, I would say, uh, speak now, please.
I have a lot.
Okay, so then let's, uh, we'll put this, we'll back off this topic for a second for the sake of moving through this ordinance. So, if you would like to, uh, um, we can halt the, uh, discussion on, uh, letter H here, and we will continue with what you have to propose.
Okay. So, well, let's start with section two definition. My point, when I asked to compare the new ordinance with the old ordinance, I wanted to know, to make sure we didn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. So, let's start with section two definition. If you look at our current ordinance, I would add back in abandonment, the definition of freestanding solar panels, rated nameplate capacity, um, solar energy equipment, solar energy panel, solar glare. And I would like to discuss why you didn't wanna, why you got rid of solar access, for example. Okay? Um, and then I would go to the, to, to your definitions on your draft, and I would start with accessory solar energy system. And it says, "A solar energy system that is," and I would get rid of, incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the parcel or development, and is. And then start with either one entirely roof-mounted or two ground-mounted, you know, that part. I would keep that. I would go all the way back to the, next to the last sentence where it says, um, "After you go from electric, oil, propane, et cetera, that it is necessary to support the," I would get rid of, "principal use of the parcel on which the solar energy system is located," and put in the word residence. Because you would only use an accessory solar system on residential property. Um, we fixed the two contaminated ones. Um, go down to the large solar, large-scale solar energy system. I would add back in at the end of that sentence where it says, um, um, it says, "Any solar energy system that is not either one, an accessory solar energy system, or two, a contaminated site solar energy system as defined by this ordinance." I would add back in part, the last sentence on that page that you crossed out by tw- by, in red. "These are systems whose main purpose is to generate energy for sale back into the energy grid system rather than being consumed on site." I'd like that added back in. On page two of your, um...
Sharon, this is Bob Marvel. I just, one, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, one comment on your, your change, uh, to the definition of accessory solar energy system. The last part where you say that is necessary to support the residence. Um, I can foresee situations where a business would want to install, uh, roof, uh, roof-mounted solar panels to support, um, you know, the energy needs of their business.
We have...
Go ahead.
Um, okay, maybe I may... Let me look at this. All right, if that's, if that's, if that's in general, then if it's both roof and, um, ground-mounted, then you could say residence or business. You don't, I just don't like those words, "Principal use of the parcel on which the solar energy system is located." You could put business or residence or business, you know? Would that make it, that, to me, that's clearer. Uh, that's, that's, that was my point that I was trying to get to, that I don't like those words. Principal use of the parcel. That's why I got rid of them.
I, I, I mean, I, I, to add, I mean, I mean, principal, I understand it's, you know, obviously sounds different than home or business, but I mean, the principal, I mean, if it's a business, the principal use is the business. If it's a residence or a home, it's the principal use. I mean, I, I just...
I don't like the word principal use. I don't like those words. I just, anyway.
Uh, any other comments? Any other councils have any comments as far as, uh, that definition?
I have more. Please stop me, but I have...
Excellent. Well, I mean, I, I mean, I would like to be able to respond as you're going along instead of trying to remember every single thing that you're doing.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I, I just think that's kind of, I mean, if we're gonna be thorough and talk about it. Uh, but I don't see any hands. I don't see any comments, so feel free to move on.
All right. Um, let's see. Um, on page two, I'm not sure that we, uh, it says, um... Okay, so the first line, "A property, uh, re- remediated and restricted contaminated site, a property one that has been identified and confirmed by RITM." And I, I guess, as, I, I, I don't know if you're gonna put the date in, "As of February sixteenth," one more time, "as having contained a hazardous material contamination, two, on which remediation activities were conducted to the satisfaction of RITM." I'm not sure about this, um, as documented with the, with a letter of compliance or an interim letter of compliance. I'm not sure whether that needs to be there. If, I'm just wondering if you just put a dot after the, after, uh, after RITM, you know, satisfaction of RITM. And, um...
Counsel Davis, Counsel Gary.
Yep.
Do, do you, maybe we, do you, are you having a problem understanding what letter of compliance or interim letter compliance is?
Yeah, that, that's the part I've...
All right. All right.
I'm not sure that we necessarily need to have that. That's my question.
All right, do we need a definition of it? Maybe we're getting it to town plan to give us a definition of it?
No, I don't know where it came from. And I don't, I'm not sure if, if it has to be in there, that's all, just a question. I, I, I would like our attorney, our attorney to answer that.
Attorney Seiple, can you answer Counselor Davis's question?
I'm. I believe that these are items that were. Taken straight out of the, uh, Department of Environmental Management's, uh, regulations having to do with contaminated sites. Uh, I'd, I'd be happy to, uh, see if Attorney Squares could, could confirm that, but that is my understanding.
That, that's correct.
So I, I, I'm gonna say we should probably keep it in there if it's in the regulations of the Department of Environmental Management.
All right.
Counselor Moffitt, I, I think she wants to put today's date in or February sixteenth in, right Sharon? Somewhere in there?
Yep.
Do you, so, so Sharon, you, you want, uh, February sixteenth added to, uh, the reme- the remediated and restricted contamination site? So all three of the, uh, definitions, uh, referring to contamination should have the, uh, February sixteenth day?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was just asking in general, and I guess, I, just asking why your definition of a solar energy system is different. From our, uh, our current. Um. Our current. Page two A. Maybe I can't find it now. I'll let it go. I'll let that go. All right, um. But why did you change on page five, uh, purpose and applicability? Why did you change it from, um, the o- our old one that's on page two of our, our current?
Um, but. That there wasn't, um. I, I guess, um, that it's similar to the language that's there now. Um, I was just going off of, uh, of a form that I had, uh, when I put that purpose section in.
And shouldn't we, uh, shouldn't we add back in, um, severability E and, um. Uh, in our D applicability, we says, we say, this ordinance, I'm on page two of our current one. Um, this ordinance applies to all PSES whatever to be constructed after the effective date of this ordinance. PSES constructed prior to the effective date of this ordinance shall not be required to meet the requirements of this ordinance. It's kind of like a general thing. I, I don't know if that statement, it's kind of obvious that anything old. You know, anything that got started before the new ordinance. May, we said it didn't have to, you know, it didn't have to apply it. It just went with the old ordinance. I don't know if we want to say that this time around or not. I just for discussion. Under applicability. So. I don't know.
Counselor Davis, this is Counselor Marvel. Um, I think that is the same thing as what is on the new proposed one. Under five dot three dot one, uh, item B. Where it says accessory solar energy systems for which a building permit application has been submitted. Prior to the enactment of this section shall not be subject to the requirements found herein.
All right, so that's the same as D. Okay, okay. Then do we want, and then the other thing for our, our, um, counselor. If you look on page three, we had F exemptions. And I don't know if that is, is, um. Allowed or not, although it's currently in our, on our ordinance. It says the planning board shall have the authority to waive and or modify any of the provisions of this ordinance. Within their review process for PSES located on town owned property. Is that? Legal?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm not, I, I'm sorry, I went to page three of my copy I've been following along on. But that is the use table.
Attorney, page three of our current ordinance.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I, uh. I'm, I'm afraid I don't have a copy of the current ordinance. Is that?
On the town's website, front page to the right, about halfway down.
Chapter two forty-six, Counselor.
I'm sorry, am I, are you on the Muni code? Or are we on the, uh, meeting agenda page?
Oh, the Muni code. That, that's where you'd find the current PSES. I don't.
I don't know that the Muni code is actually up to date with the current PSES. And I, 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 I had to come home to do the meeting and I didn't print a copy of, of that particular page.
I, I'm really asking our solicitor, is that? Is that legal to put in or not? It's number F. At the top of page three of our solar ordinance, our current solar ordinance where it says exemption. The planning board shall have the authority to waive and or modify any of the provisions of this ordinance. Within their review process for PSES located on town owned property. I don't know, it's not, you know, it's not in, in the new one, but, uh, it, I don't know if we want that brought over or not. That was the question.
I, could you, um, since I don't have it in front of me, could you read that one more time from the old ordinance, please?
The planning board shall have the authority to waive and or modify. Any of the provisions of this ordinance within their review process for PSES. Located on town owned property.
Uh, I, I would not advise including that in the ordinance.
Okay, that's, just asking the question.
Okay, sorry, sorry it took me a few minutes to catch up there.
All right. Okay, um. And then I want to go to accessory again, page, uh, uh, six of, 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 uh. Swartz, Attorney Swartz's, uh. Draft.
Yep.
Okay, under, under D on page six. Uh, it says. I, I'll tell you what I want to take out. And I, and I guess maybe, anyway, I'll just read, at the time of application for a special use permit, as is applicable. Pursuant to this section, the applicant must demonstrate that any ground mounted accessory solar energy system has been designed. To produce no more than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the energy. And again, I guess I thought you would take out. That is necessary to support the other uses occupying the parcel. I don't like that. And then pick up with, uh, that is necessary to support the, and I want to change. Again, take out principal use of the parcel on which the solar energy system is located. I was gonna say the residence and I, we could, if you think that it's also a business. Residence or business. I just don't like those words that you use, that's all. And, um. Then it says on a parcel with, and I think I'll, you have, I would add N, A N between with and existing. And then I would put residence. Or business again, where you had principal use. I don't like the word. The applicant shall provide the energy consumption documentation for the uses for the previous three year period. And then for all new, again, take out principal uses. Where ground mounted accessory solar is proposed, I would change for all new residence. Because this isn't, now this is talking about ground mounted, so it's only the residence. I don't think it is the business, right? I was right. So it was only just the resident, not the business. For all new residents where ground mounted accessory solar is proposed, the applicant shall provide. An estimate of energy usage. Prepared, and I'm saying by the utility, not by a certified or qualified engineer. I am, instead of, you know, I, that's. I don't know, that's what I think.
Yeah, Counselor, uh, Counselor Moffitt, Counselor Gary, yeah, I kind of, I, I kind of agree on that. A qualified engineer. I think we, I think last time we had spoken about this. Is they actually have people from National Grid in or whichever power company you may use. That are site specific, they'll actually come out and work everything up for you vice hiring. I agree with Counselor Davis on that.
Counselor Moffitt, Counselor Marvel here. Um, one of the things that I think we need to consider is if a resident, uh, decides that. He or she has the means to do this, um, to replace their national grid connection completely. With solar, uh, on their roof or ground mounted. Um, in that case, you wouldn't have National Grid come out and do the work for you because you're disconnecting them altogether.
Mr. President, if I could suggest that it's a qualified engineer or the, uh, applicable utility.
Fine, I think that sounds great. I mean, I mean, there's, there's obviously an option there. I mean, I, I think it's kind of broadened it a little bit.
You're saying, um, okay, you're trying to make, you're gonna say qualified engineer, you're gonna keep that in there? Which means they have to spend money for an engineer to. Do this or. I thought the whole point was that the utility was gonna be able to tell them what their usage was, et cetera. So I don't know why you need to have a qualified engineer.
Counselor Mar- Counselor Marvel here. So we have two situations, a- and I think what Attorney Squares said, he would. He would change it to say a representative from the utility or a qualified engineer, one or the other. Because you, you would have a situation, you might have a situation where, um, like I said, if I had the means to. Uh, you know, I wanted to take my property completely off the grid and go with, you know, the Tesla roof mounted panels. And the Tesla battery, battery pack in my garage and, and just disconnect completely from the grid. I'm not gonna be able to go to the, to National Grid and say, hey, can you help me do this? Because they're not gonna do it. So I'm gonna have to bring in a qualified engineer to be able to do this.
Is it, all right, it. Is it a qualified engineer or is it the actual installation company that's gonna tell you what you need? You know what I mean?
The installation company may provide a qualified engineer or they may not, or they may suggest a qualified engineer.
That, right, all right, all right. You can put it in or, and or, or whatever, how you want to do it. I just, I just didn't want to have to require it. The qualified engineer, if you could get the information from the utility, that was, I was trying to think about the resident. Why should I have to go out and find somebody?
And pay him.
Yeah, to tell them what they need when the utility ought to be able to tell them what they need.
That's what we've just done here, right? We've added and or on the utility. So I think that kind of satisfies both sides where Counselor Marvel is saying somebody wants to completely go off the grid. National Grid will not, will not supply their, their needs. So they may in that case have to have a qualified engineer to do that. So I think, uh, Mr. Squares's, uh, recommendation of and or, uh, the utility. I, I, I think that's a great suggestion and I think it kind of covers both angles here. So I think, um.
Okay, okay, I'll go on.
Mr. President.
Page seven of the new draft.
Sharon, hold on one second here. Uh, Scott, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I have a, a question for the town clerk and one of the things I was looking forward to. Is having input from the fire departments of Ashway and Old Valley, Wyoming. And I don't believe they weighed in on the solar ordinance at all, have they? Or we haven't got any correspondence, have we?
This is Lisa. No, we have not.
I thank you. I like that to be in the record and, and it will be because the stenographer's taking it down. Thank you.
Okay. On page seven. Uh, letter F, it says the applicant shall submit a landscaping plan. Prepared by licensed registered landscape architect authorized to practice in the state of Rhode Island. With the building permit application for ground mounted solar energy system. Um. You really are, uh, like asking a lot. I think that's a lot. Um. I don't know what else, I just, I think that's a lot for, for somebody to do in their yard. That they gotta come up with a, they gotta pay a, an architect, a landscape architect to draw up a landscaping plan for them. I, I don't know. I'm just up for discussion, just up for discussion. I think it's a lot. We didn't ask that before.
Well, let's have a discussion then. Uh, Counselor Gary, it sounded like you wanted to say something. Did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I, Counselor, Counselor Moffitt, Counselor Gary here. I concur with, uh, Counselor Davis. I, I, uh, do we need an architect to put up trees? I mean, a good qualified landscaping business, like a local shop, could figure that one out. As long as they're licensed, I would go with that. But an architect, uh, I, I, I disagree with that one with, uh, Counselor, Counselor Davis.
And that's, that's, that's something I'm, I am willing to be flexible on. I mean, again, um, I would like to know that, uh. It, it's done right. I kind of think that's why it was proposed. You know, we want to kind of, uh. Just make sure that the screening is proper, they're using the proper plants and, uh. That's that, you know, I mean, I mean, we don't go out there and put our bitey around it, right? Because you know, every deer and hop is gonna be where they're eating it. I mean, there's.
That one's already been tried and it failed, that it failed miserably.
Right, exactly. I mean, that's definitely not the, uh, you know, whatever. So I mean, I, I'm, I'm flexible on that. I, I have no, you know, problem changing that. Um, I think that's, um, uh, fine. I, I mean, for the, you know, average homeowner, that may be a, a bit much. But, um, I think it's stated farther down through, uh, this ordinance where, you know, when, when we're getting into say contaminated site solar and it's a large scale.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that, that.
Sure, no, I understand that too. Um, and while, while we are on this section here, I don't want to get past it so we don't have to get back and people do not have to flip. Their, um, teaches that much. On page six, um, subsection, um. F, uh, letter C on page six, it's all power transmission lines from ground mounted solar energy systems to any building or other surfaces. Shall be located underground. Uh, there's gonna be cases, you know, I mean, um, you know, we've all seen it. I, I, I have it here in my yard where, um, I mean, I have ledge probably in at least fifty percent of my yard here. So, um, you know, that, that may be im- impossible. So, um, I'm, I'm looking for language, uh, to maybe say wherever possible. Um, if it could be a little more specific than whenever po- or wherever possible, I would like to add that, um, I would, um. I don't want to limit it to special circumstances. I mean, obviously if somebody, you know, can't go on the ground. I mean, I don't want to completely eliminate them from this, uh, discussion here. or, or the ability to, uh, to have the, uh, ground-mounted solar. So, um, wherever possible, or, I mean, I, if, um, if Attorney Squares thinks that, I mean, that's...
Can you, can we say maybe in coordination with the, uh, with the utility? So, if the, if the utility doesn't think that's possible. We have that kind of language already somewhere in your, in our, in our old ones.
Right, and, 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 yes, sir.
Maybe somewhere, uh, permissible, uh, with, uh, site, site environment or something like that, or sites, site-specific.
Here it is, here it is, here it is. It's actually on page three of our old one. Number two, it says, um, "All electrical connections and distribution lines within the facility blah blah shall be underground unless physical strength, constraints to the land make underground, ground lines impossible or impracticable, impractical as determined by the town engineer or building official."
Which I would probably just go with the building official. Um, he's doing the, uh, special u- or he's, I mean, that's who they're going through. So, I mean, to get the town engineer involved in a, in a small residential ground-mounted solar, I think would be cost prohibitive.
Right. And it says, the next sentence is, says, "Electrical equipment between the facility and the utility connection may be above ground if required by the utility." So, some of that lang- that, that language should be brought over to that section.
Do you see that? Sharon, just one, just one second here. Attorney Squares, do you see that language? You know the language he's referring to? Do you have a copy of that?
I do, thank you.
All right.
Do we need to finalize it?
Um, I, I, I honestly think, Sharon, we, uh, just need to, um, make it, it needs to be above ground.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, hold on. "Unless physical constraints to the land make underground lines impossible or impractical as determined by the town building official," and then end it there.
I'm good with, Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary, I'm good with that. That sounds good.
Now, you can continue, Sharon.
Okay, wait, 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 I gotta find it, okay. Okay, um, so, where was I? All right. So, we did that. Oh, H, on page seven, at the top, H, "Decommissioning and removal plan at the end of the useful life of accessory ground-mounted solar must be submitted." Really? Are we asking for people to do discom- decommissioning plans for roof-mounted solar? I, I, it's just...
Oh, I mean, that's, uh, again, it's, I mean, we can have a discussion about it. I mean, you know, I've heard all, early, um, I, I think, uh... This is, uh, Counsel Marvel. Yes, go ahead, Bob. Um, does it make sense here, and I'm, I'm asking probably Attorney Squares if, if his, his opinion on this, does it make sense here for us to state here that decommissioning and removal is the responsibility of the property owner, not the town, period?
You could do that. Um, you know, I'd just note that the reason we put in the decommissioning language is because this is for ground-mounted accessory.
But only accessory.
Yeah, right. So, you, you could put in just language saying it's the, uh, responsibility of the, uh, property owner.
Mr. President, also, if I could, uh, chime in there as well, I, I think that, you know, having a, a decommissioned, no longer functioning ground-mounted solar on your, your property is something that the, uh, the building inspector or the zoning officer would be able to go out and, and enforce that, uh, just like they would if there was a, you know, a sign-up for a business that was no longer there, or, or by whatever, it would just be a zoning and zoning or building, uh, enforcement issue. And so, I don't think that, I, I mean, they can do that regardless of whether there's a, uh, um, decommissioning plan by the homeowner.
So, a de- a de- decommissioning plan is not necessarily needed, but, um, I, I like language that, I mean, obviously, you know, that we don't want, I mean, if it's outdated, not being used, just like you said, I mean, it's, it's the equivalent of a junk car sitting in a yard. So, um, I, I think, um, think, uh, right, um, yeah, I mean, shoot, it's kind of, kind of, I mean, obviously, this is the different scale than a large-scale, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy-acre solar field. We may be talking here four, five, six hundred square feet of solar. Um, you know, to ask for a de- de- decommissioning plan may not be, um, you know, kind of really, really feasible at that point. Um, and at that point, there's probably, who knows if there's, you know, I mean, you see all these junk car scrapping guys around, you know, in twenty years, you'll probably see guys with pickup trucks potentially driving around scrapping solar panels, who knows? I mean, I, I don't, I mean, it's kind of hard, obviously, to predict the future, but I think we at least need some, uh, language that says it needs to be removed at the end of life. Um, I don't know, know how that's kept track. How do we know if somebody's not actually, if it's not in use anymore, you know, or... And that's gonna be kind of hard to track, you know, if, I mean, twenty-five years down the road, I mean, it's, that, that's a long time. I mean, is there a, a list of, I mean, it's, I mean, we could talk about this all night long. Um, I just think it needs to be removed at the end of life. Um, I don't know. I don't know how to word that. I don't know how to put that in there, um...
Mr. President, if I could...
Yes, sir.
Make a comment, um, you know, that the fact that it's, uh, asked for a decommissioning plan, um, whenever you had a solar installer install ground-mounted solar on your property, they're gonna provide you information with the useful life of the solar ener- energy system. Um, and so, I'm assuming whatever the manufacturer provides could be provided to the building official as the decommissioning plan, that would simply state, you know, "We'll, we'll comply with the, uh, the manufacturer requirements of, uh, the useful life of the project, and then remove it when it's done." The way I would see this being enforced is that if you live next to a solar energy system, and, uh, the neighbor notices that it's abandoned and it becomes an eyesore, they could then report that to your building and zoning official. Um, and if the zoning official looked at the file on it, they would see that when the original per- uh, permit was pulled, they submitted that plan. Um, and that would be something that they could use to measure whether or not, um, the solar system needs to be removed or not. So, that was the intent of the language.
Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary.
Yes, sir.
I agree, I agree with what Sharon's saying. I agree with the attorney there. You know, decommission, boom, if, you know, maybe we put a timeline on it, you know, say, say some kind of timeline, say ninety, a hundred and twenty days, something like that, after it's decommissioned, okay? Decommission starts, stops June first, you know, you get till, say, September first, September fifteenth to pull it out or something like that. Because if we leave that open, everybody's gonna make it a determination that, uh, you know, that everybody's gonna make a determination that time, and anybody swell, it could take six months, could take six years. Hence what we're saying about someone next door who has a junk car in their driveway. So, if we put a time limit on it, that would be the first place to start. You know, say ninety to a hundred and twenty days after decommission must be completely disassembled and back to where the property was prior to, or ground mounted, or what it was before.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that language, um, I... Sharon, are you fine with that?
Yes.
And maybe Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary, maybe something at the end of decommission, like we were saying, uh, like the two attorneys are saying, maybe, uh, zoning officer or building inspector can go out and, you know, everything's said and done. He can give it his stamp of approval and kind of monitor it at the same time before, you know, he signs off on it. I don't think, you know, some, something along that, something along that route.
Bob Marvel here, uh, Counsel Moffett. With, along the lines, along those lines, uh, uh, in, in the current PSES ordinance under section E, post-PSES approval regulations, there is items three and four, page nine and page ten. Um, on, uh, item three is decommissioning, and item four is removal requirements. Perhaps we could incorporate some of those, uh, from our current ordinance into that, because some of that speaks to, um, decommissioning completed, uh, within a hundred and eighty days of abandonment, um, et cetera. I, I mean, I like that. I like, "The owner shall physically remove the PSES no more than one hundred and eighty days after this continued use." I mean, I think that's... I mean, because if somebody's investing in this, I mean, they're using it for twenty-five years. I mean, so, we're, we're talking twenty-five years down the road here. And like Attorney Squares had mentioned, you know, I mean, obviously, um, there's gonna be a, uh, a built-in permit on record, um, and, uh, we will have a, a date. So, um, I like, I mean, it, it could be plain language. I like exactly, number... The last sentence on number seven on page three of the, uh, wait, I'm gonna look. Page, um, the first sentence on page ten of the current PS. I think that language satisfies it, really.
Yeah. I like that.
I, this is Bob Marvel. I actually like all of, um, item four, removal requirements. Some of it gets very specific on what they need to remove and what they need to remediate the land afterwards.
Counselor, Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Uh, I think maybe we could, maybe we could import some of this stuff into the February sixteenth draft. I think we're all in, I think we are on the, we're all in the understanding, we all like numbers and stuff like that. That's, that way it pretty much closes up the gap on anything. Maybe we could import some of this stuff over to the February sixteenth draft, make it a little bit easier.
So, to stop the bleeding here, you know, as far as this conversation goes, for lack of a better word, Attorney Squares, what, what do you have for H? Is there, is, have you, have you inputted some, I mean, have you, uh, put something down there as far as language goes, just to kind of, you know, because I hate to have all these ideas come at you, and you're trying to juggle all, all, all these words on paper, and...
You know what, I, I could just, uh, take a note to go back to the old PSES ordinance and, uh, just take the, uh, language on abandonment from that, if, if the counsel, if that's where the counsel wants to go with it.
And removal requirement.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much, uh, removal requirements. Right, I think that, that section, uh, it starts on page nine. Removal requirements, uh, Counsel Marvel, that's where you like number four? You like all of number four right there? Yes. Hey, Sharon, did you have anything else?
I'm ready to move on to roof-mounted. I just have like four, four of the, I have five questions, maybe. Not that many, really. Um, I compared your section G with our roof-mounted sections, and for the most part, you brought things over, and, um, you have a couple of new things, and then some of the things that you brought over, I'm wondering if we, if they're, if we really can enforce them. So, starting with, um, G, number B, uh, "On flat roofs, accessory solar energy systems shall be set back from the edge and/or behind architectural features to be minimally visible." And I, I question, is that, is that possible? Is that really possible on flat roofs? So, I don't know. That's, that's a new statement, that's, that's from you guys. That's from you, Attorney Squares. And number C is also new from you. Uh, "Panels and devices may be set at a pitch and elevated only if not visible from public streets." I don't think that's true.
Yeah.
I mean, I think a lot of roof-mounted solar, you can see from the street. I don't think you can say that, you know, we, we can't, um... You know what I mean? I don't think we can say that.
Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary.
Go ahead, Counsel Gary.
Yep, I kinda, yeah, I kinda, I think we, I think we had gone over this many, many times on February sixteenth draft, the same, same page that Counsel Davis is on. You get down to, you down to G, item C. "Equipment frame support structures related rooftop equipment shall be painted to match predominant color of the roof."
Yeah, that, I wasn't going there. That was the next one.
I, Counsel Davis, I apologize if I stole your thunder, but we're on the same page. Go ahead, please.
Yep. Well, I just, you know, I think, is this possible? And I do know that, um, for example, the, the gentleman who sent you guys pictures, me and you pictures of what, what roof-mounted solar looks like. He has black frames. They look fine. That doesn't matter what color the roof is. So, I don't know. I just, I, I, and, and that's brought over from our old ordinance. That was, and so, I don't know if that's enforceable. Should we put it in again or not? I don't think so, but... It's just for discussion.
I mean, I can't imagine someone's gonna go out and paint their mounting equipment red. I mean, I, I just don't, I don't see that. I, I, I'm sure, I mean, and it not, it's not gonna be a, um, you know, like an aluminum shiny, you know, reflective, you know, material. I mean, just, just because, I mean, it's obviously painted to protect it, so it adds, adds longevity to it, and, and it's not rusting off of your roof. Um, I, I would, I mean, say, it's probably safe to say ninety-five percent of all, uh, all, um, support structures are probably black. I don't think I've ever seen any, any other color. Um, and again, you know, we don't, we don't dictate what color people paint their houses. I mean, if you wanna paint your house future, I mean, and, so, I mean, I don't think it should be necessary in the business of deciding what color the, um, equipment, frames, or structures are, really.
Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think when we were reading some of the stuff, the gentleman informed, I think it was Newport, was Newport, uh, Energy or Renewals.
Newport Solar.
Newport Solar. I think you, I remember him saying along the terms of that ninety-nine point nine percent of all frames are aluminum, because if you use standard steel, or it's not powder coated or something like that, you get rust stains down the side of your roof and/or your house. So, most of them are all aluminum, and even the big sites, the solar sites, if you look at that, that's aluminum. And most of your hardware is all stainless steel, nuts, bolts, et cetera.
Um, so, I would recommend that we take E out, for example.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm fine with, with removing E. I agree.
And I don't know about, about C. I'm, I'm questioning that, because I know you can see, you can see most of the roof-mounted ones. You can see it from the street. So, I don't know why I put something in there.
I, um, can I just make a comment? I just wanna, I mean, we are, what, in our second month of looking at this ordinance? I mean, a lot of this language here has not changed in the last two months. I mean, it's, we've moved things in and out here. Um, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know. I just wanna make for the record, I'm, I'm just surprised we're discussing most of what we're discussing here, and... I mean, we've had, I mean, we can, obviously, it's important, if it's important to whoever and however...
I mean, we've had, I mean, we can, obviously it's important, if it's important to whoever and however. I mean, I know, you know, we all get emails here and there, everything's coming in. But I mean, I just, I thought some of this was behind us, you know, as far as, you know, being in agreement when we went through this whole ordinance, like, work, work, work. So, um, just a little, uh, just surprised that we are, you know, yes, you know, some of us are maybe digging into it right now for, I just want to make that statement, that's all. Carry on.
Mr. President, could I make a comment too? Just briefly. I just want to let you know that I was tracking the changes as we were discussing, but the document, the word document that I was working off of just closed and didn't save. So I don't have those comments tracked. You know, the last few times I was able to track it as we discussed, but I don't have those tonight.
The ones that we've already discussed tonight, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, the, the document that I was saving, I mean, it crashed it. I don't, I don't have the, I don't have it saved.
All right, um, where to go from that? I mean,
So what document do you have?
The last document I have that saved is the February 16th, 2021 revision that was sent to the town clerk's office before the meeting.
Right, right. That's what I'm working off of.
Oh, I, I know, I, I, I know that. I just wanted to note that, you know, as you were going along, I was trying to track those changes that, that you were discussing into the document. And that, the change document crashed without saving. So, I mean, I could, I could make a suggestion is that maybe if, if it would ease the process to, if, if you, if maybe a written copy, if someone wanted to submit a written copy of changes and then I, I could either incorporate that and circulate that around or, you know, I'd leave it to the discretion of the council.
Hey, Attorney, Attorney, Counsel Gary, wouldn't the, wouldn't the stenographer, if she's on, have a copy of everything we've talked about?
I mean, I, I would think so, but I, I, I think it takes time for her to go through. I don't think it's like instantaneous. I mean, I, I can't really answer that question.
Yeah. And I think we'd have to order a transcript from her too. Which, which would take time as well.
I mean, so, I mean, not to beat a dead horse here. I know that obviously, and, and, and I'm just going to back up a second here. I mean, I, I don't know. The only suggestion I, I mean, I have moving forward would be to continue what we're doing. And then, I mean, obviously Attorney Squires could keep track from this point on. And then, I mean, I mean, that's the only suggestion I have. I mean, I don't know, Bob, you have any suggestions? Do you know any type of? No, this is Bob Marvel. Um, no, nothing I can think of. I mean, if you, if you reopened it and it didn't come back to a renewal, a recovery copy, then, then yeah, it's, it's probably lost. I guess my only suggestion here would be to go back to the top and, and try and quickly go back down and, and re-note all of the comments or the items that we talked about. Go through them.
Not to waste your time on that, I would, if, if maybe the comments, if, if Counsel, Counselor Davis wanted just to submit something in writing to me with the comments, if she has a list, I could, I could work off of that and, and just incorporate that. If, if she has a list that she's working off of.
It's not a list. It's the actual February 16th document that I just wrote all over and crossed out. And that's what, that's what I did.
Mr. President, what, what about the, uh, the, the meeting minutes? I, I think that the clerk keep pretty detailed minutes.
I would say so too. Um, well, I mean, it would, it would obviously require Lisa to have a quick turnover on the minute, uh, meeting, uh, the meeting minutes. So Lisa, are you there to comment on that? Or do you care to comment on that?
Do I have a choice?
I, I don't, I don't want to single you out, Lisa, but I, you do do a good job of keeping the minute. I thought that would be possibly helpful to Mr. Squires.
We will certainly try to help and we, but we do use the, uh, the audio and the video as well. I try to make notes on the documents. I do not get all of them. So it's just going to have to be a, um, it, it may be a couple of weeks before we can get them to you because the, the minutes take a lot, a lot of time. And we've had a lot of meetings. So my, I start the meeting minutes and then Marita usually finishes them. So you're just going to have to be patient as we proceed. I can't promise stopping everything. I just can't. We are in the middle of an election for tomorrow. We have other duties and responsibilities. So we will work on them and try and get those accomplished within the couple of weeks. So.
Counsel President, Bob Marvel here. Just a quick question actually for Lisa. You, you mentioned the, the audio and, and video of this meeting. Is that something that in it of itself could be provided without too much effort on your part to, to Attorney Squires?
It gets usually within a day or two, it's published on the town's website.
Okay, because, because that, that could be the way to go is to just re-watch the, the meeting, as painful as it might be.
I could do that. And then actually, if, if Counselor Davis wouldn't mind, if she has a, just a hard copy with notes handwritten on it, what would be easiest for me, if she doesn't mind sharing her notes, is if she could either scan it in or take a picture of her with her phone and email it to the clerk and have that emailed to me. You know, I, I could work right off the notes and, and go do it that way instead of having to watch.
Okay. Um, we can try.
Or if Counselor Davis wants to stop by the office with her documents, I can scan it and email it also.
Okay.
That'd be great.
All right. Where do you want to go now? Are we still under, under G roof mounted solar?
Yes.
Okay. So, so at this point, do we want to talk about B? Do we want to include B? Do we want to include C? And do we want to include E? I think E should be taken out, but I don't, you know, so far, those are the other three, other two, B and C, I was, were the ones that I was questioning.
E, E, we had all agreed that we were fine with striking E from it. Thought it was kind of, you know, kind of, you know, tough to kind of make people conform to that considering we don't decide what color they paint their house or their fence or what color car they have, all that other stuff. I think that's a fair striking that from it. As far as B goes, I mean, I think, I mean, I mean, we're probably referring more to, I mean, I don't see many flat roofs in residential areas. I think that is more so, I mean, and it's just, you know, how I see things. Flat roofs tend to be typically a, a business or in, in a commercial area. So that's just pretty much to keep a kind of things consistent, you know what I mean? As far as, you know, I mean, because we do have guidelines as far as building structures and stuff like that. I think that's, uh, that's something that could, you know, be consistent. I mean, I think that's fair to have in there. I mean, I think, I, I mean, panels, devices may be set at a pitch only if not visible from the public streets. I mean, it's, I mean, are we talking public street 400 feet away, you might see it. I mean, a public street 30, 40 feet away, you might not see it. Or I mean, you know, 300 feet, you might see it, you know, if you're walking down the road, you, you know, you probably won't. So I, I mean, I would think I mean, I don't know. I mean, I would, you know, panels, devices may be set at a pitch and elevated only if visible from the public street. I think I don't have a problem with it being in there. I think obviously, again, it's more than likely going to be a commercial kind of solar setup, I think. That's just.
Well, I'm just saying that I, I know that I've seen solar on roofs of houses from the street.
Well, right. I mean, everybody's going to see solar from, I mean, that's just a given. I mean, you know, that's the whole behind.
So, Counsel President, the, the intent of that provision is that if you have a pitched roof, that the panel would be flat to the roof. I think that's the standard.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
Method of, of installing at this point now.
Right, right.
So it wouldn't be pitched off of the pitch of the roof.
Counsel Moffett, Council Gary.
Yes, sir.
Kind of think about if you're going up, you're going to get on 95, look to the, the storage building on the left-hand side, look up. That's, that's kind of what pitch roof that's flat.
I got you. I mean, I know that you just, you know, keep them with the natural contour of, of, I mean, I get it. 100%.
Okay. All right. Leave it in. I, I want to move on. I'm almost done with the, with the roof stuff. And then, and then we're back to the contaminated, which is really where we have problems. But anyway, um, um, J, on page eight, J, says panels shall not be located within three feet of any peak. That's not in most building codes. So I don't think we should, I don't think it's enforceable. This is on a roof. So I, I don't think that that's enforceable.
Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary, I think we had talked about this. I thought we had talked about this, some about chimneys, piping, some, some of the, some of the panels might have to be moved around. We had talked about this on the, on the 16th.
Yes. And what, and what did we decide? I mean, I, I thought, I mean, I mean, based on discussions, I mean, Attorney Squires, as we've gone through this process of workshops and meetings and stuff, has, has made notes and made adjustments. So I mean, everything that is, you know, and that's why I made the comment earlier, most of the stuff that we're looking at tonight has been redefined. I mean, I mean, not redefined, but refined to kind of meet what we've kind of come to a consensus on. And that's why I was just kind of surprised that some of the stuff we're, we're actually talking about right now because we've had so much time to talk about it. So that's all.
At February 16th is a thing that's in, I, I don't think it's got changed. I mean, isn't that what we have a copy of in our, in our packet?
Revised draft clean, that's what I'm looking at. February 16th, 2021.
Right. And that is it. That's what, that was the latest revision from Attorney Squires. And I, I, um, I'm just double checking and if that's really not building in the building code, then we can't really request that. And, and we had it before. It's not like we didn't have it before. It's on, it's, um, B9 under three. So I gotta find it in the, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, maybe we're, maybe, yeah. B9, it's, it's part of B9. Um, on page five of our current, of our current solar.
Counselor Davis, what page was it on in 246?
Page five.
Yeah, page five in our current.
Number nine, about halfway through it.
Yep. The last three lines, panels shall not be located within three feet of any peak, eve or valley of the roof. And I don't know that, that that's, it's not really part of the, of regular state building code. And so maybe we should not require that. And that, that's not Attorney Squires' fault. That's, you know, it's not something that he put in. It's something that we had and he just brought it over. We told him to bring it over. So.
I mean, my, my thinking would be, I mean, again, I mean, it's, I mean, I like, you know, it maintains pathways of accessibility. I mean, I, I don't know if, again, I, I could be corrected if there's any, you know, firefighters.
We're talking about on the roof. I don't think that you can get that to happen by a, a, a person who really is installing roof, uh, solar on your roof. They're not going to do that. You cannot enforce that. So that's why I'm just questioning whether we should have that.
Any other comments? Counsel Hurst, you haven't said much in a while. You got anything on that?
When I feel like saying something, I'll say it. But thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Moffett, Counsel Gary. Maybe we can slide something in there in accordance with the roof structure layout, something like that. You know, it could be they get 10 panel, 10 panels to go this way. All of a sudden, like we say, we run into a chimney or XYZ or something like that. You know, maybe we could leave a little space there in accordance with the rooftop layout or something. Because all roofs, of course, we know that, that all, that all one, one roof, there could be different versions, you know, there could be different, different roof on a different house.
Sure. I mean, I, I, I mean, I would, I, I, again, I mean, I would think a solar installer would probably have, I mean, I would think they have this stuff down to science now, you know what I mean? As far as mounting it and putting it on there. Again, I mean.
They're the ones who are saying that that's not enforceable. That's the point.
Right.
So maybe we should rethink our, 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 our requirements. That was only, that was it.
Counsel President, this is Counsel Marvel.
Go ahead, Bob.
Maybe, uh, maybe, uh, what we do is in item J, we just state that all panels and equipment will be installed as per building codes and state fire codes.
Excellent.
Yep.
I mean, that.
Counselman Hurst, I will say something. I, I'm a little disappointed the fire districts haven't, uh, the fire departments haven't weighed in from either end of town, but is it, uh, just as a suggestion, should they sign off on any solar that's on any roof or anything of that nature? Is that plausible to put that in an ordinance in order for them to be allowed to do it? Because one of the concerns that I have, and I'm not a firefighter, although I've been a fire district official in Ashway, is I know that, I know there's always a concern about vent, ventilation of the roofs when they have a fire. So but they do have certainly in some places solar on roofs. So that's just something that's front of my mind. Thank you.
Counsel President, this is Counsel Marvel. I, I agree with Counselor Hurst that I'm, I'm surprised too that we haven't heard from our fire officials. I, I have read some news articles about fire departments having concerns about large amounts of solar panels on roofs where they're fighting a working fire because it's generating electricity in its live. So if they're trying to vent into the roof, they're working around a live electrical conduit. So there's definitely a concern there. I would like to have some more information about that. I don't, I don't know if we can, you know, reach out to our fire officials in any different way to get their opinion. to get their opinions.
Council Moffett.
Yes, sir.
Council Gary, uh, I'll reach out to Chief Spazato if it's all right with the rest of the board, the rest of the town council.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that.
I'll, uh, I'll call the fire chief in Ho Valley, Wyoming and ask him to get back to me and ask, uh, why that hasn't been responded to or for their input, and I'll, uh, call him tomorrow. I get a phone number and I'll call and uh, I see Chief Spazato at the brick oven quite often, so, uh, I end up seeing him in person. I don't know Chief Lee up in Ho Valley, but I will call him tomorrow and I make a note to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
And then the last one, the K, um, did we talk, did we talk about deleting? Um, the fifty cent, fifty percent coverage? I, I just. Th- this was an, I think this was a new, uh, Attorney Swer's was K new for you?
I think this was carried over. I'm not certain because I, I, I don't have the old one in front of me, but I think this was carried over. Let me pull it up and double check.
Uh, Mr. President, if I could on, on letter K there, my, my concern was that it says all panels on commercial roofs shall provide this information. Doesn't say which information it's referring to. So I don't know if it's referring to back to letter J or or to something else, but I, I think it's pretty unclear the way it's written right now.
Yeah, I, I think that was something that got carried over that, um, probably should be struck from this provision.
Council Marvel here. Uh, the original or the, the existing PSES ordinance, it's, uh, section B, item ten. Um, in, in actually, it was carried over and half of it was, uh, was not carried over the first part of it. So I can read what the existing ordinance says. It says, systems located on a sloped roof shall provide as part of their permit application, evidence of design review and structural certification if the slope of the panel differs from the roof pitch. All panels on commercial roofs shall provide this information regardless of slopes, as well as any residential roof with greater than fifty percent coverage.
That first part is, is now the last part of J. If you look at the last half of J, the last three lines of J, that's where B ten is. And I, so, it's interesting.
So half of J, I'll, I'll, let me give a little clarification. So half of J, starting at systems located on a sloped roof in the old PSES, is continued with all panels on commercial roofs. So the way in the old PSES it is written, number ten, so it's, it's almost if, as if K should read, systems located on a sloped roof shall provide as part of the permanent application evidence of design.
Yep.
And that should be letter K. So does, does that, does K make sense now? I mean, it did, does it, uh, state where, which information they're looking for, um, system? Council President, this is, uh, Council Marvel again. Uh, to me, it makes more sense that way, but I question whether it's needed because it talks about a permit application. Well, scratch that. Hey, I, I just, I, I don't know if it's needed or not. That's all. I'm not sure that it's needed either, Bob.
So should we just delete it?
Think so.
Okay. Okay. Now we're back to your contaminated stuff, and you guys can take over. I quit.
Sorry, I, I, I just need a minute to gather my thoughts. Um, this is kind of, you know, my plan is kind of off the rails here. Um, so we were obviously still stuck on, um, uh, letter H in sections five, five point eight point four of the contaminated, uh, site, solar energy systems. No, uh, letter H here, um, our state's seventy-five percent or which I have proposed seventy-five percent. Um, I know Counselor, uh, Davis is not thrilled about that number. She's not thrilled about thirty percent either. So I'm not really sure where we, where we are headed with this. Um, I mean, I know we had the conversation and we talked about obviously some of the, um, contaminated sites in town. Council President, this is Council Marvel. Yes, sir. Um, I would like to suggest, at the very least, um, separating that first part from the second part where it says in instances where a parcel is rezoned from residential or commercial to manufactured zoning. I think it would make sense for us to make that, uh, a, a separate item. And then perhaps we can talk about each one of those individually. Does that make sense? I think so, Bob. I think if you want to start it off or end it. So, so then, so then we have, we'll have item H, which talks about uh, contaminated sites that are already manufacturing, and then we can, we can discuss whether we want to keep the thirty percent coverage or change it to something else, because that's really all that we talk about in, in that case. Um, or maybe perhaps just remove it altogether. Um, and then in the, the next item, um, is where we are rezoning from residential, commercial to manufacturing in order to permit, um, this ground mounted solar. Um, in this, in this case, we are specifying here the lesser of three percent or three acres. And I, I would respectfully suggest that we keep that the way it is for now. I would agree, Bob. I think I I'm gonna say I agree. Sharon, do you have anything to say? Or anybody else, any other council members?
I think that's a, that's, uh, it'll work for now. It'll work for now. And then, and then, so the second part I agree with, with, uh, with Bob Marvel, and the first part, um, as I said before, there's only two properties that are, that would, there's only one really that's big. And that's that Imperial Home Decor. So I think you can have your seventy-five percent if you want it. So it works out. It works out.
Council Davis, this is Council Marvel. We, what's the largest property in acreage that's on that list?
That's, that's Coda Manufacturing.
Is that one that's, yeah, that's one that's already manufacturing.
Ninety-two point six acres.
Two acres.
But it's got a big, um, if you, if you talk with Jim Lanfer, Imperial Home Decor has a very big building. I guess it was like a warehouse or something. And it has a lot of wetlands, so you probably won't do a lot of acreage, uh, of solar.
That was kind of the point I was trying to make it earlier. This is, uh, Council Marvel. I would concur with, i- if you want to, uh, allow no more than seventy-five percent of that in zone that's already manufacturing, I would, I would be fine with that. So how would that be stated, Bob? How, you're, so you're proposing what? Just kind of reiterate that for me? Yep. So, so item H would state, uh, contaminated site solar manufacturing zones shall occupy no more than seventy-five percent of a lot exclusive of wetlands, which is to include inter row and panel collector spacing, period. And then you would have item I, it would say, uh, in instances where a parcel is rezoned from a residential or commercial to a manufacturing zoning designation for the purpose of accommodating a contaminated site solar energy system. The maximum coverage shall be the lesser of three percent of the lot or three acres, and so on.
And I, I still don't like the other part of it. Um, but anyway, I just, I don't know. I, I guess I would ask, um, our attorney, do we really need to talk about subdivisions?
So, so Sharon, uh, I'll just, let me jump in. This is Bob Marvel. Let me just jump in real quick with my understanding of this. Is that we are, um, stating explicitly that they cannot use subdividing to get more solar area? Because I don't think, and this is where I would have to defer to our attorney to verify this. I don't think that we can flatly state that they're not allowed to rezone a property that they own. Or, or I'm sorry, uh, subdivide a property that they own. Well, um.
In the past, when, when, when we try, when people were going to, um, change a, a residential property from, uh, residential to commercial solar, that whole property became that. There were no subdivisions beyond it. That's what has happened in the past. Because a lot of people would want to subdivide, keep their house uh, on a, on a part and make that, keep that residential, and the other part could be strictly solar. And then that was what we didn't want, did not want. Because there are a lot of large property owners that are, you know, in fact, the, the old ordinance kind of said that you cannot have a residence on a solar property. So that's why you couldn't subdivide it and stay on the property in your house. And, and that's why I don't want this talk about subdivisions, but unless you make it more specific or, uh, different language, but I, I don't get what this language says.
If, uh, sorry, this is, uh, Steve Seipol, the, uh, solicitor. Uh, if, if you are putting the lot coverage requirement like above fifty percent, then the, the subdivision language doesn't matter anymore. This is to stop someone from subdividing so they can get twice as much solar, but uh, that.
This is only, this is only for the, the ones that want to be, that were formerly residential, and that, and that, we just agreed that the most they could do is three acres. So they can't, i- i- but anyway, the whole property would become commercial solar if you, if you change from residential. It would become solar, period, and you couldn't put anything else on it. You couldn't have a house. You couldn't divide it.
Right, but in, in the current ordinance, the only thing we're talking about is the contaminated sites, correct?
Hmm, now, yeah, now. But the old one, you could not subdivide a property. If you, y- y- you could not subdivide it if you wanted it to become solar. If you were changing from residential to commercial, you, you were taking the whole property.
Well, I, I don't think that's a concern anymore under this, under this new ordinance, because there, there would I'm.
Well, I don't know why he put that in there. I, our old ordinance didn't have anything about subdividing. This is a new part, so I don't understand it, and I'm trying to give you a feel for how it was before. We didn't do any subdividing.
Mi- Mr. President, if I, could I address that?
Please, please do.
Um, so the, the, the point of that language, and it, and it goes along with the rezoning language, limiting it to three percent or three acres. As, uh, Councilman Davis, Councilwoman Davis correctly, uh, pointed out. Um, the point of that language is that if you're limiting a rezoned parcel to, uh, to, to three uh, to, to three percent or three acres, you wouldn't want someone to, uh, get rezoned and then subdivide into six lots, so now they can get, uh, eighteen acres or eighteen percent. Um, th- the, the point was that if you rezoned, even if you go and subdivide, uh, you're still only gonna get three percent or three acres on the total. Now, um, I, I know that, um, a subdivision is, is governed by, um, you know, that, that's a decision that the planning board makes, whether or not they'll allow a subdivision to, to go forward. Um, so in, in my opinion, I don't think you could say, a- as a part of a rezon, you can never subdivide this parcel. So instead of doing that, the intent of that language was that if you get a rezon and you can only get three percent or three acres, I'm, I'm sorry, three acres on the total, that you can't su- then subdivide it and get three acres on each new lot you create.
There was no subdividing. Nobody who, nobody ever came for a subdivision after they got rezoned residential, um, from residential to, to solar. There was no subdividing. In fact, that was the whole point. If somebody wanted to keep their house, they really needed to do the subdivision first, to make two parcels and then come to you and say, I want this, this parcel, all of this parcel to be solar and had nothing to do with my house. So, but nobody ever did that. So most of the time they came, they wanted the whole, as much of their property as possible, and they recognized that they weren't gonna live on it anymore, that it was gonna be a solar product, project, um, and it was gonna be zoned commercial solar, and so they couldn't live on it anymore. Because it was commercial, it wasn't residential, and you can't have residents living on commercial land. So we never even got into this subdivision thing. If they wanted solar, they were moving off the property. Um, and so that's why, and, and that was the other thing. I don't want, we didn't, somebody did try to say, well, how about if, if I, if I live down here in the right-hand corner and I put my solar in the upper-left-hand corner? But if they hadn't gone through subdivision before they came for a solar. But if they hadn't gone through subdivision before they came for a solar situation, we said no, because you have a house on there. You can't live on a property that's solar. So, um, I just, um, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to even talk about subdivisions, subdivisions. You know what I mean? I, it, it's just, all you're doing is opening a door. We have, and so that's why I, I don't want to change that. I don't want that in there. Something else, but I don't want that in there.
Sharon, Bob Marvel here. Uh, just a question. Do, do we have any language in the ordinance that specifically prohibits a landowner, once they have rezoned and put three, say, three acres of solar on, uh, a property? Have, do we have any language that prohibits them explicitly from, um, um, subdividing that property?
I have to, I have to look at, I have to look at this, but, because I know that's how we thought. You know, that once you've got it rezoned, you can't live on it. And I, and I have to figure out where that was.
You can't live on a manuf- a manufacturing zone?
Yeah, well, I, I'm, I'm talking about outside of, of living on it. So, so here's a scenario for you. Say, I have a hundred acres of land that I own, but I don't live on. So say I live somewhere else. I just have this land. And I wanted the, you know, three acres of, of solar. So I, I got it rezoned and, and I got my three acres of solar on there and decided later on, well, I've got a hundred acres. Why don't I subdivide it into four lots and then I could get three acres on each lot?
That's, no, no.
Do we have anything that explicitly prohibits that from happening? Because if it's not explicit, then we need to keep this to, to, to be explicit about this.
You know, I think the, the main thing is that the definition, the, the title of our current solar, uh, ordinance says non-residential. Okay? So I, I don't think that it really thought that there was going to be a lot of people trying to change, trying to put something on a residential property. It was only later when they realized they don't, they don't have that much non-residential property in the town of Hopkinton that the council thought about, maybe we ought to be able to put it on residential. Um, but I, I, I don't know. Jim, Jim Lansier, can you tell me, can you have a house on something that's, that's zone manufacturing? And live in it? I don't think so.
No, no. Jim Lansier, Tom Plan, no. Uh, residential use is not allowed on a manufacturing zone.
It's not allowed on a commercial zone either, is it?
Yeah, uh, Sharon, if I could just, while I'm speaking, as long as I'm speaking, I just want to weigh in on this, uh, sentence here on subdivisions. Basically, what, what that is saying is that if somebody had a hundred acre parcel and they could do their three acres, that you don't want them to come along and subdivide the parcel into, let's say, two fifty-acre parcels. Because that, that's, that basically is prohibiting that from happening at all here. Because if they were to do that, the three acres solar that they had initially been granted would not be maintaining the coverage. That would be, that would be a six percent coverage of a fifty-acre parcel. So basically what that, what that is, in, in effect, what that's saying is, if you're gonna, if you're gonna go for your three percent or your three acres, uh, and maximize your, your, your property for a hundred acres, you can't, it's, it's basically telling you you can't subdivide the property. So, would, you know, I don't, would somebody want to sacrifice? I don't know if somebody would want to sacrifice a hundred acres of land, uh, you know, not, not doing a subdivision in the future to get three acres of solar on their property. Uh, I, only, only maybe a farm would do something like that where they can continue to use the ninety-seven acres. But if, if I was a landowner, I'm not going to throw ninety-seven acres of my property away to get three acres of solar. So, so I, I, I don't know if that would even come into play or not, to be honest with you.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to understand is the, is the wording at the, on page eleven, where it says, um, the, the last part of the first sentence, um, well, I'll start at the last part of, the last, uh, it, on page ten, it says, "Any subsequent subdivision of a parcel that contains a contaminated site solar energy system shall be required to maintain the maximum coverage requirements established in this section." I don't what that, don't know what that means. Subdividing a lot may not be used to circumvent the lot coverage requirements established by this ordinance. Those two, those two sentences don't have meaning for me. I, I'm not sure what you're trying to, what you're trying to get at.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that if, if, if I have a hundred acre parcel and I wanted to, uh, put three acres of solar on there, like, like, like this allows, okay? I don't, with a rezon now, okay? And, um, that means that I really could not subdivide any further that lot, that hundred acre lot. Because if I was to make that hundred acres any smaller than a hundred acres, I would not, I, I'd be, uh, violating the ratio there you have of three acres. It, it, it wouldn't be three acres to a hundred. It would be three acres to something less than a hundred. So that's basically what that's saying.
So why don't you make a, a sentence that says, um, you can't subdivide anymore, uh, that parcel anymore? If you, if you, if you've put a solar system on it?
That's a little bit clearer. But again, I, I, I'm, I'm going to defer to my solicitor and say, you know, do we have the right to say something like that? I'll, I'll, that's a legal question.
I, I think it's perfectly fine to say that you can't use, uh, the, you know, you can't subdivide to try to undermine the, uh, lot coverage, uh, requirement in the ordinance. Um, but then if, I mean, if, if we raise the number from three percent to something above fifty, it's, it becomes completely meaningless because then you, you, if you subdivided your property, it like, you wouldn't get any benefit from subdividing anymore after that. If the lot, if you can go up to fifty or seventy or eighty percent lot coverage, then you wouldn't have any incentive to try to subdivide to, to get more.
Okay, but the point, the point that you're making, um, how can I say? You're saying that you, that you needed to require, you, you're required to maintain the maximum coverage requirement established in this section. So if you already got the max for a hundred acre parcel is of three acres, you wouldn't be able to sub, subdivide. So why would you even talk about subdivision? You know what I mean? Either, either you say you can't subdivide, I, I don't know. It just doesn't, it's, it's, it's like, it, it's like saying you can subdivide, but you can't. You can subdivide, but you can't, but you can't, um, do it because you, you have to maintain the, the maximum coverage requirement. Well, you can't. So obviously you can't subdivide.
Jim Lansier, Tom Plan. As, uh, Mr. Marvel pointed out, uh, those first two sentences really are talking about two different things. Uh, one, again, we have, right now, we have two contaminated sites that are presently zoned manufacturing. So that first sentence could be applied to them. Now, second sentence, the other eight contaminated sites are not zoned manufacturing. So the second sentence is saying that, okay, in the instance where you rezon, you can do the lesser of three percent or three acres. So I, I'm not sure how those two sentences are going to interplay. I suppose you could make the case that, well, okay, once I rezoned the manufacturing, now I'm going to go back to sentence one where I can do seventy-five percent. So I, I, I don't know what the purpose of the second sentence is, to be honest with you. As a matter of fact, I, I just want to go back to what I said initially, my, my first comment that I made, is that with, with respect to contaminated sites, I think the council is worrying about altogether too much. I think they're overthinking this. You've got to remember one thing. There's two sites zoned, first of all, we're limiting it to ten sites, contaminated sites, right? As of February sixteenth, these ten sites are eligible, number one. Of those ten, two are currently zoned manufacturing. If any one of those other ones, uh, which are not zoned manufacturing, request a zone change, it goes to the town council. The town council in the ordinance that changes the zone can specify a certain coverage, uh, uh, particular to the unique situation that's before it. Whether it's the Townsend property that you're talking about, or the Bowley property, whatever you want to say it is, or, or whether it's the Stubtown landfill. The project will go before the town council. The council will decide an appropriate lot coverage for that particular project. And then we go from there. So, I mean, the whole thing, the whole thing is within the council's purview. And matter of fact, even after the council changes the zone, specifies the lot coverage, that project then goes to the zoning board for a special use permit. So I mean, there are more checks and bal- and then it goes to planning. There's more checks and balances in doing one of these things than you can shake a stick at. So I mean, I, I really don't know. If, if, if the town doesn't want to see one of these projects happen, there's so many places where they can pull the, you know, circuit breaker on it, it isn't even funny. And it's starting with the council. Nothing happens until the council makes it happen. So I, I really don't know why so much concern is, is with this paragraph.
Yeah, and if I could read, if I could, uh, comment on that, Mr. President, uh, that this paragraph is just, uh, it, it came from your old PSES ordinance or it was based on it. The language that, um, Councilman Davis highlighted wasn't in that prior ordinance. But, um, you know, to go to, to what your planner has just stated, uh, he's right. You know, the council can always change the requirements of an ordinance when they're considering a rezon project. Um, you know, so really, that provision is more guidance, I guess you could say. I felt like I should keep it in based on the fact that it was in your prior ordinance, which is why I put it in this ordinance. Um, but, you know, putting all that aside, the point your planner made is right.
Ultimate Hurst, I want to thank, uh, Town Planner Jim Lansier for pointing that out. And, you know, I don't want to be too critical, but we're kind of overdoing it, uh, very frankly. The, uh, you know, uh, you can take any law, even after it's passed, and, and pick it apart or say it should have, this I should have been dotted or this T should have been crossed or whatever. But, uh, it's really, I have been on the council eight terms and I've never recall in my service on a town council, we've had an ordinance or anything else that's had this much scrutiny, debate, discussion in my eight terms. I, if somebody can point it out to me, I'd like to know what it is. Because I, I just don't, uh, I don't even think the Complan took that, uh, this much time, as I remember. Uh, but, uh, it's really getting, with all due respect, kind of ridiculous at this point. I know some people will not agree with me on that, but it's really going there. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, on that note, um, I'm going to, um, I would like to continue this conversation, but not tonight. So with that being said, um, I'm going to, um, and, and for the fact that the council has not finished our discussion on this, I am going to, um, put the public comment off because I am continuing this open hearing. The hearing is still open. Um, um, I would like to reschedule it. Not that I wanted to. I was kind of hoping tonight to, uh, to, to have kind of put, put most of this to bed tonight and vote on it at our next meeting, but it's not looking that way. So I'm going to say, um, um, our next regularly scheduled meeting is-
The eighth.
That's our town council budget meeting. Um, our next scheduling, uh, regular scheduled town council meeting is on the fifteenth. Um, Lisa, do you, do you have a, an agenda or is there, is there room on that, on, on, on that day to continue this, uh, public hearing?
This is Lisa. Yes, I believe there is. You have one hearing that was continued in regards to Consular, former Consular Thompson's, uh, amendment to the district use table. That was continued to the fifteenth, but I believe that's the only other large-scale matter that, so I think you have room on the calendar, yes.
Uh, Mr. President, if I, if I could just, uh, interject, I'm, I'm-
Yes, sir.
Available on the fifteenth, but also as a, um, as a suggestion, um, I know that I'm, I'm going to have to work backward and start, uh, reincorporating some of the comments from earlier in the night that I lost. Um, so I wonder if maybe to try to just come in with one final product that you can look at, be comfortable with and to kind of expedite the process that, and your solicitor can weigh in if he thinks this process is, is not the right one. But if we kick it out a little bit further, let council members send written comments to me directly, um, not communicate with each other, but directly to me. I'll incorporate that into a draft, circulate a clean copy. There'll be plenty of time to get that posted on the website. And that way, hopefully, when you come back, um, you know, it, it won't be something that we're creating as we talk about it that night. But it will be something that everybody's had a chance to comment on. I've incorporated comments and, and everybody's had a chance to look at it ahead of time.
Yeah, also, Councilman Hurst, again, I'd like to have, uh, Steve Seipol review that and give his perspective to the town council, whether he thinks it should be, uh, private attorney-client privilege. But, uh, he is our legal counsel and I'd like to have his perspective on that. Thank you.
Councilman, I, I have been, um, reviewing the drafts as they've, as they've come in. And, and I, I, I would hesitate to make any recommendations to the council that are of a, a policy nature. Uh, so I, I'd be happy to review it to see if it, it seems like all the changes have been incorporated and, and to have an extra set of eyes on it. But I, I, I would hesitate to make any, you know, suggestions about what the, what the policy, uh, in the ordinance should be.
Well, I think a good lawyer never gives, generally gives policy recommendations. They, or political recommendations. They're supposed to be there to give, uh, legal. And I appreciate, uh, solicitors that do that, uh, and not our political advisors or legislative advisors. They're strictly, uh, legal advisors. So I really appreciate that attitude. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilman. Yes, I, I mean, I, I have been doing that throughout this process, uh, with the various drafts. And, uh, I mean, I, I don't, I don't currently see anything in the most recent one that, that, uh, appears to be legally problematic. It's really a policy issue now. But I will be happy to continue, uh, reviewing the draft as it comes in and, and making sure, uh, it's ready for the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. So, um, with the suggestion of Attorney Squires, so you are suggesting that we, you know, prolong it past the two weeks? Is that what you're saying? Is that your suggestion? I just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
Yeah, that, that would be my suggestion just because, um, one, I'm not available on the fifteenth. But, um, also I think, you know, if, if, if any council members have concerns about the draft and, and that they want to submit a written comment ahead of time to me, that way I can present it to the council with those, those changes flagged and incorporated. And, you know, it's teed up and ready to go when you come back.
Right. So wouldn't you mean teed up and ready to go? Does that mean ready to go that we could schedule a decision like the following week? Or, you know, I mean, it's kind of-
Hopefully, hopefully.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right. Um, so let's have some discussion as far as that goes. Two weeks out. I mean, uh, that obviously, um, Attorney Squires is looking for a little farther out. Um, I, I really don't want to suggest the following week because that'd be, this is four weeks in a row. I mean, we're in the budget. We've, we've had quite a few meetings. Does the twenty-ninth work for everybody? Does that sound like something we could, uh, we could work out?
March twenty-ninth?
Yes, sir.
It's like twenty-eight days away.
What's that?
Just trying to lighten up the situation.
Yeah. No, I, I had to turn down my volume a little bit. I didn't want to wake up any of my children.
House of Gary said it was twenty-eight days away. His math skills are pretty good, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with-
I mean, I mean, unless we want to schedule it, I mean, on, on the twenty-second, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, that would be, uh, pretty much called, I mean, I guess, I mean, uh, would, would that be considered a special meeting? I mean, I, I don't know because it's not on a regular scheduled day. Lisa?
Captain President, I'm, uh, I'm also not available on the twenty-second. Um, I have a, um, another meeting that night.
Okay, so, so Mike, uh, so my next question would be, we had a meeting on the twenty-ninth, okay? And we fell after that- we had a meeting on the twenty-ninth, okay, and we felt after that meeting that we were ready to do a decision. Um, would we be able to come back the following week and make a decision and not dragging this out? Could we call a special meeting to, to make a decision on a public hearing? Or is that not the normal process?
I think he's asking, Lisa.
Okay, I wasn't sure, and I wasn't, didn't want to interrupt, so.
I'm sorry, Lisa.
So typically what you do is you have it scheduled on a council meeting night and you'll follow the normal process and go through your hearing and whatever continuances there are. You get to a final product or are close to a final product, and then you set the date for a hearing. Typically, it can be the following week, as long as you have all the information that you need in front of you and that all of the amendments have been incorporated into the ordinance. Um, and it is very difficult to read the tea leaves and read what everybody is going to be voting. So, um, I'm, I have calendar in front of me, so potentially you could schedule this for, um, Monday, March twenty-ninth for the continuation of the hearing. And potentially you might be ready to make a decision on, um, April fifth, but you might not be. I just.
Okay, all right.
Reviewing various scenarios, so.
All right, well, thank you very much, Lisa, I appreciate that. Um, so I, I, I'm going to move forward with the twenty-ninth. So, um, we will, we will continue the public hearing the twenty-ninth of March.
I don't think we need a motion on that.
I don't think so either.
I think you do.
Okay.
I think you do, actually.
Mr. President, what time?
Go ahead.
Council President, Council Gary, what time would you like to do that on the twenty-ninth?
Uh, seven o'clock.
Great time, okay. I make a motion, Mr. President, Councilman Hurst, that this hearing be continued to March twenty-ninth at seven o'clock PM.
Do I have a second?
Council President, Council Gary, I, uh, I second with, uh, Councilor Hurst to the twenty-ninth at, uh, seven o'clock.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, Hurst aye, Gary aye.
Davis aye.
Moffat aye. Um, okay, with that being said, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, uh, Councilman Hurst, I make a motion, the Hopkin Town Council adjourn in memory of Linda M. Holman, Gerald M. LaFoley, and Patricia K. Martin.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Councilor Moffat, Council Gary, I second, uh, Councilor Hurst's, uh, motion.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Hurst, aye.
Aye, Marvel aye.
Moffat aye. With that being said, uh, meeting is adjourned, thank you, uh, everyone, thank you very much, good night.
Don't forget to get out and vote tomorrow morning.
Or don't forget about the school committee, uh, the school budget meeting tomorrow night, seven-thirty. We need a quorum of twenty-five residents per town, so be sure to register. You, you have to pre-register for those meetings. Thank you.
And please remember to shut off the lights and lock up the building.
Oh, look, look, look.
Good night.